Start with our roll call. If you'd call both the city council and then call the planning commission. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sir.
Colin?
Here.
Oyo?
Yep.
Hi. Voice Mayor of Athens?
Here.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much. Planning Commission?
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Lansick?
Here.
Bolito?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here. Okay, um, this is a study session and a special meeting, so we will only have public comments pertaining to items on the agenda, which is the ADU housing. Are there any public comments at this time? And we will be accepting public comments as we discuss the items. Yes, Carol, thank you.
Um, so I'm here, not as Carol Flaherty Knight. Most of you know me. I'm here for the Atherton Housing Coalition. And I think that you all are not aware that we're a lot larger than you think. We're a lot more organized and we're a lot more formalized than you think. So I was asked to come tonight to share that we are disappointed that this meeting was not better advertised. And it's not transparent. I found out about it yesterday from an email from somebody else and I had to drill down, not from the town newsletter, but through the agenda to find that this was even going. And one of you, one in this room, sent me an email at three oh two today to tell me about this meeting. In spite of the fact that those of us in the housing coalition have been to Tuesday sessions, written letters, come to council meetings over and over. You know our position, you know our interest. And the person who sent me an email, Sung.
Well, it was nice of-
So. The-
Don't, don't do that again.
I probably shouldn't have said that. Sorry.
Guys, come on. You know we have an interest. You know that we're working behind the scenes. We announced in the last meeting, Carol, that we were gonna have another meeting. We would be every, every- We said we were gonna be meeting every Wednesday.
Well.
For the rest of the month. We did say that, but I'm sorry that you didn't get it. I, I thought you were on the town's email list.
I am. I'm on the county email. I get the newsletters and I read the newsletters, but here's the, here's the just guys. The coalition is putting together a, a study of other towns. You've done one already, but we're doing our own. We're putting together some suggestions and we hope that you will not decide on a final draft to present to the public without some input from the coalition. It's not Carol Flaherty that's doing it. It's a group. So we are now organizing into subsets to become a little bit more thoughtful, a little bit more organized, and hopefully have some constructive input. But by God, we want some input. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Last time I thought we described the fact that with this, after the study sessions, then it would come to the planning commission and also the town council-
That is correct.
Public hearing and, and discussion. It, this is so that we can thrash through all the, all the different vari- variable things to make it a little bit smoother in both those meetings, get the public more time to speak. Is that what I understand? Is that correct?
That, that's the process. However, we, you know, if they were here, they would give us input for consideration while we were here. But we, well, we, there's two other opportunities to get-
Right. Thank you.
So hopefully we'll make sure the planning coalition, the housing coalition is informed. Anthony will do that for us, but they have to read the newsletter. So, no problem. But you were gonna tell me you were on the recall committee.
That's the next session.
Okay, that's fine. No problem. That's okay, you know, because I've got other things to do sometimes. Uh, okay. Study session. Now discuss the changes and updates to the accessory dwelling ordinance and the, and the associated municipal code section. And so what Sung, I believe, is going to do is, and he, in the pack, he has identified, thank you very much, what state law says that we can't change and what staff has come up with that we can say yes or no, or modify. And so, uh, take it away.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll do the introduction and then I'm also gonna be sharing my screen as I am now. So as we go through each of those policy questions, uh, that we got in advance from some members of the council, we'll go through each of those. Sung will talk about, but the question is what the issues are, what state law may or may not say about it, whether it's a policy discussion. If it's a policy discussion here, then we'll have that discussion. He'll be taking notes. But I'll be sharing my screen and moving through each one. So whatever's up on the screen is the one we're focusing at that particular time.
And now it'll be on this, right?
It'll be on that as well. That's correct. So the members on Zoom will be able to, to see that and follow along as well.
Got it.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Sung now to start with the first one.
So these are for the, for the member of the public. These were policy questions that the council put together at George's request to say, these are things when we were talking about this and reading the pack last time, these are questions we had, okay?
I'm sure it was you. Sure. Okay, I think I called last night and wanted to respond to you. Share it with Rick and I. But that is just a one day, you know, thought. So, so we will meet again this week and we'll work on the response item by item.
Okay, if you would, if, if you would share it also with George, he will distribute it to the rest of the council so we could all be informed.
And the planning.
That would be helpful.
And the planning commission, right?
Yeah, and the planning commission since they're here. Okay, number one, let's get going. Because we're gonna, we're gonna plow through this and we're not going home to see the warriors or have any other celebration until we're done, because we must get this done.
Great. Um, so the first question is, what is the maximum size of an ADU that we should allow? Should we require two bedrooms if ADU is over a certain size? Should we allow an exemption for a full square footage ADU, not just a eight hundred square foot ADU? So, um, the state code limits the size of an ADU to twelve hundred square feet. Um, that town cannot have bedroom limitations. Um, the town can have limited bedroom requirements. Um, and as you can see, under six five eight five two point two, uh, what those limitations are. So if the council and commission would like to discuss this item.
Well, we've, uh, we've talked about giving an allowance for an ADU. If you build an ADU, you know, the square footage allow, allowance. Can we, Rick and I spoke today, full disclosure, can we go ahead and, and restrict the eight hundred square foot from being allowed, you know, from, from, uh, being not seen by the floor plan allowance? So only have it a, an allowance for larger ADUs, which have better setbacks and things like that.
You're, you're talking about the floor area exception?
Yeah.
You're, so the suggestion is perhaps, say, that, uh, the eight hundred square foot ADUs, the ones consistent with state law, aren't, don't receive the same floor area exemption that someone would get if they wanted to build a larger ADU up to like twelve hundred square feet? And that would then encourage larger ADUs, which might be more compliant with the towns.
Well, it will also, it will also drive in the setback requirements that we wanna have and other, other items that we put in, such as where the door are and things like that.
Right, right. So I, I did pose that question to Andreas. Andreas, are you, uh, on the Zoom call here as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you have a chance to look into that question?
Um, I'm still looking at that one, whether that would be an okay requirement or if that would be arbitrarily distinguishing between the different sizes of ADUs. So I'm still trying.
Comments on that by the rest of the planning commission or anybody else on the council?
I'm not sure what you're saying, that we would require a minimum of a larger size?
No, no, we can't do that. We're saying that you, because the eight hundred square feet ones can be like right on the curb. Um, what we would prefer to do is we'll give the allowance to the larger ones so that we could put other restrictions on them, how they're built, what they look like, you know, where the doors are, where the windows are, and how, what the setbacks are.
Bas- basically using the floor area exemption to incentivize someone to build something larger than eight hundred square foot.
Understand. So I misspoke when I said in my question, because not only do I think that's a good idea, but I think there should be no fee waivers of any kind for an eight hundred square foot, four foot setback on yard construction. You can only waive fees for what I would call good neighbor ADUs.
I agree with that one, for sure. Well, that one, that one is addressed later on. We can't technically do that. HCD won't let us discriminate between them with respect to fees. Uh, because it's disincentivizing the eight hundred square foot ADU.
I didn't, I didn't see that, but I, I don't, I don't buy that.
Well, that, I appreciate that, but we do have, you know, legal folks who would-
Yeah, Rick, you have a question?
I suggest that we deal with that when we get to that.
Right.
Can I ask a question about, I think that's a good idea, but hypothetically, if there's a property owner who's had, who's hit their maximum, if we, could they not build an ADU then?
So, so the way that would work, in, in hypothetically anyway, assuming, uh, the town's legal team can process that in terms of HCD's requirements. Uh, if someone has maxed out on their floor area, we still have to allow them to have an eight hundred square foot ADU. Can't prohibit that. But if someone, let's say, has, is not quite maxed out, but they had a twelve hundred square foot ADU, uh, they would get the whole floor exemption up to twelve hundred square feet and they'd still be able to build more on their property because it's a-
Okay, and how would that work if some, if we wanted someone to convert a pool house into an eight, or into an ADU? Where they'd rather get their square footage back from that pool house?
Right.
If they did an eight hundred foot ADU, they wouldn't get-
Area exemptions, right.
That already has all the setbacks and stuff, so.
So that actually could work against a better, a better outcome. So if, if somebody's converting a pool house right now to an ADU, we'd rather have that because it's probably in the backyard and has diff, and is out of sight already. Whereas if the, if this regulation was in place, it would disincentivize those becoming eight hundred square foot ADUs and make it so that, okay, well, then I'll put it in front.
Well, yeah, yeah, Eric, what we want to do, and I'll get to Rick in a second, we, we don't want these things right on the curb.
Right.
You know, I think it, you know, so there are some pre-built ones. Some of them look okay, but some of them aren't great.
And, and, uh, you know, the, the neighbor across the street isn't going to appreciate that.
Yeah, there's an issue like that at Meadow Park going on right now. Just started up.
Yeah. All right. Rick, you had something?
Uh, I think that we could say- I think that we could say that if a, um, if an ADU, whether it's initially built or converted, uh, is in compliance with the stat, with the town setbacks, that it will get, uh, free square footage up to twelve hundred feet. Well, it can't be more than twelve hundred feet. Uh, uh, so we, we can cover that by saying, saying if it complies with the town's, uh, setbacks or zoning ordinance, then, uh, it will get, uh, free square footage. Uh, but if it doesn't comply with the town's setbacks, then it must be at least X square feet to get square footage. I, I think that's basically what you're saying.
Yeah, except for, um, we wanna have it comply not just with setbacks, but where the windows are, where the doors are, stuff like that.
Yeah, well, we can say the town zoning requirements, whatever, however, you know, Sung wants to frame that. I, I don't care.
So, so what you're doing is distinguishing, this is the eight hundred square foot ADU pursuant to state law. Here's all the guidelines with respect to that. What's not included in that list is the floor area exemption. And then with the twelve hundred square foot ADU, these are all the requirements, includes all the setbacks, the window placement, the, you know, side yard access, all that stuff. And you get the floor exemption.
And, and it doesn't have to be twelve hundred. It could be anything.
A thousand, yeah. The only thing is that could be interpreted as, as a disfavorable thing for the eight hundred square-
Why would that be any different?
It, it, that's what, that's why Andreas has gotta work through that process to see if it's legal or not.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like it's just a favorable, but the, but the rules around the eight hundred square feet say anything goes.
It actually, we don't really care if it's eight hundred. We just want to comply with the town zoning.
Right.
So we-
We're trying to incentivize.
It could include, absolutely include an eight hundred square foot ADU if it complies with the town zoning requirements, then it gets free square footage.
Right, right. Interesting to see if that holds up, but if it does, it's great. Right. Okay, um-
Free square footage at eight hundred feet. They get it anyway.
Yeah, but they might wanna free up other square footage for the main house.
Rick, you had something else?
I was gonna say, um, when the ordinance language is written here, uh, I think it's important not to include in the ordinance, uh, s- some things we don't need to include that happen to be what the current, uh, state law is. So for example, if the state law says that, uh, uh, any, um, uh, ADU that is, uh, eight hundred square feet, uh, has a right to be four feet from the property line. I, I'm not sure if we can say, we, we, we can avoid having to say that. I'm just saying, I, there are going to be some changes to state law in the next few years.
Right.
As times pass and I'd rather minimize how much change we have to make to our ordinance language. So unless we have to include the reference that the state law uses, I'd prefer to not include it because I think there's gonna be some changes.
Well, yeah, we could, we could put a preamble that says this is in concurrence with state law, blah, 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 blah. And the town says, right?
So the, technically, the town does not have to adopt an ADU ordinance. If we don't adopt an ADU ordinance, it just falls to whatever the state law is. But if there is state law that gives jurisdictions discretion and state law changes over time, I think we wanna make sure that we retain that discretion.
Much as we can.
As much as we can. So if we're silent on an issue that suddenly state law changes, then, then we wanna speak to the issue in our code.
We certainly want to address those things where we want the local law to prevail because we have the ability to do that, like this item that we're talking about right here.
Right.
Okay, okay. Carol, do you have anything to add? Or anybody online as well? Go ahead, Carol first.
With respect to this particular-
Yeah, we're taking, we're taking public comment now.
Thank you. Are you including the second part of item one in your discussion now as well, requiring two bedrooms and an ADU? Or is that coming?
That's part of this particular item. Uh, I think the way that Steph read that, we cannot require an ADU to have a bedroom or two bedrooms or three bedrooms.
So let me make some general comments. As the one person who's building an ADU right now, and I invite you to come out to Thirty Adam Way because you can see the foundation of one. That ADU is one thousand and five square feet. And you're gonna find how small a thousand and five square feet really is. But a thousand and five square feet down a hundred and eighty seven feet of back distance is twenty five percent of the yard. And so as we're thinking about sizes of these ADUs, think about what the neighbor is going to see as well. So second comment, an average three car, not an average, the smallest three car garage is about eight hundred square feet. That's not what we have in Atherton. We have garages that are a thousand or more. And so what's been happening for ten or more years, those of us who build the larger homes, to get the ROI out of them, we max out the square footage. And we put most of it in the main house and we used to stuff a little bit over to the pool house. Or we'd have a little guest house. So these larger homes that could convert their pool houses don't have a whole lot of square footage left. So to be able to get a thousand square feet, you need more than an allowance of twelve hundred square feet. And maybe we just say, well, you know, those homes are just not gonna get that additional allowance. But if you really want, you know, additional conversions, then you should think about some additional exemption.
Well, the, the, um, the exception, if we say it's gotta be greater than eight hundred square feet to get the floor plan exception, then it just has to be eight hundred and one.
But I'm saying that you're capping at twelve hundred square feet for it not to count in your square footage. And many of these larger homes are gonna need a lot more. They're, they're gonna need more than that.
Well, we're being told that state law requires capping it at twelve hundred.
Yeah, state law says twelve hundred square feet is the largest ADU you can have.
The third thing that I would say about these ADUs is that you need to really think about garages. Because if the garage is larger than twelve hundred square feet and you're allowing an ADU on top of that garage, what are you gonna do? You're gonna have that ADU smaller than the footprint of the garage? So I think that needs a little consideration. And lastly, I would say that in terms of what does a thousand and five square feet get you? It gets you a good sized bedroom, gets you a really nice living area, it gets you a twelve by twelve kitchen with cabinets on three walls, a five by nine bathroom. Not a whole lot. And I think that one of the things that Atherton residents are really looking for, and I'm sorry to take time, in terms of these ADUs, is a place for older parents. Their parents don't care about having two bedrooms in their ADU. They care about larger rooms, especially if they have wheelchairs. So just think about that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any online comment? Yeah, oh, Rick, go ahead.
So two things. First, I just wanted to correct what you said. I think what we just talked about was in order to get the footage exemption, it's not, you have to be eight-
Oh, yeah, you're right.
But you have to-
Comply.
With the Atherton zoning.
Right.
Um, number two, I think what Carol raises in terms of the, uh, putting an ADU on top of a garage is a good question. It's come up before us before. That if the garage is a three car garage, and I, she said before, and I agree, this, this can't apply to more than three car garages, however we wanted to find that. But, uh, if there, if, if somebody wants to put a unit on top of that garage and it would be twelve hundred and fifty feet, it doesn't make sense to me that we would say, well, it has to be twelve hundred feet and there's this overhang. That sounds odd to me. Um, and where the, the discussion of, I, I don't see the language in here that says that you can't build an ADU that's more than twelve hundred feet.
It's, it's right there under number one, six five eight five two point two, A one DV. The total floor area of a detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed twelve hundred square feet, state law.
Could we grandfather existing garages and then make the replacements for new ones?
Uh, well, garages are garages, but if you're gonna, you can't grandfather in new construction of the ADU on-
You could, you could, you could have a JADU and then an AD. And I think that's the way you would have to do it.
So you, you would just do the second floor setback on a, a deta, on a detached accessory garage. That's a six car garage. It would be a wedding cake sort of construction. And that, that's usually, that is what happens on occasion when some communities where you're building a second story, they ask you to set back that second story so those windows aren't exactly over an adjacent property owner's privacy. That, that does occur in some construction design. So I'll make you a question about the intent of the law compared to what we would do in our area. Uh, so the intent of the law was to ma, to reduce the perceived impact of an ADU regulation, right? So that people wouldn't think, okay, well, somebody's gonna take and put a twelve thousand square foot ADU next to, next door to me. That was where it came from. So the question I have is, is that maximum for the, the ones that comply with their setbacks and things like that? Or is it any ADU? Any ADU. Okay, well, you know, and, and there's, there's a lot of things wrong with the law that's, as passed, and that's one of them. But there, there is, um, there is another section in the ADU handbook, uh, that Sung and I have talked about and I think Andreas will probably look into, that if you are converting an existing amount of space, a barn, a six car garage, and you wanna convert that space into an accessory dwelling unit, then it can be more than a thousand two hundred square feet. But that's in the handbook. It's not in the law. And so we have to figure out how, where that comes from.
Okay, so a conversion, so that addresses a question I had, which is, what if you have a pool house that doesn't have a kitchen and you're adding a kitchen to, or doesn't, I think that probably all have bathrooms. Uh, but mostly doesn't have a kitchen, you're adding a kitchen to, so you're making it a qualified ADU. And the footprint of that pool house is more than twelve hundred square feet, which is probably uncommon, but possible. Um, then based on what you just said in the handbook, it would authorize it, even though in the code it doesn't. And if you have a garage and that garage has a ceiling or, or something above the ceiling, which is a storage unit and you're converting that into an ADU, I don't know why we couldn't consider that to be a conversion, uh, since it's modifying an existing structure and have it-
Yeah, I don't know how the, how the state law interprets that, but, but that's something we do need to do further research on. Because the handbook was finished in like July of twenty twenty two is when it was produced by HCD. And there was a number of new laws that came on after that. So it's not exactly up to date. So we've gotta reconcile the two.
Yeah, I think- Yeah, the handbook's actually older than that. I think it dates back to twenty twenty, not twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
It is important to comment on this.
Just gonna say that, that, um, encouraging garage ADUs is something we wanna do because it's not taking up new land and it's not building, you know, things, you know, four feet. So those are the kinds of things we wanna encourage. Uh, so the intent of the law was to make, to reduce the perceived impact of an ADU regulation, right? So that people wouldn't think, okay, well, somebody's going to take and put a twelve thousand square foot ADU next to, next door to me. That was where it came from. So the question I have is, is that maximum for the, the ones that comply with their setbacks and things like that? Or is it any ADU?
Any ADU.
Okay, well, you know, and, and there's, there's a lot of things wrong with the law that's, as passed, and that's one of them.
Okay, but there, there is, um, there is another section in the ADU handbook uh, that Sung and I have talked about, and I think Andreas will probably look into. That if you are converting an existing amount of space, a barn, a six car garage, and you want to convert that space into an accessory dwelling unit, then it can be more than a thousand two hundred square feet. But that's in the handbook, it's not in the law. And so we have to figure out how, where that comes from.
Okay, so a conversion, so that addresses a question I had, which is, what if you have a pool house that doesn't have a kitchen and you're adding a kitchen to it or doesn't? I think that probably all have bathrooms, uh, but mostly doesn't have a kitchen, you're adding a kitchen to it. So you're making it a qualified ADU. And the footprint of that pool house is more than twelve hundred square feet, which is probably uncommon, but possible. Um, then based on what you just said in the handbook, it would authorize it, even though in the code it doesn't. And if you have a garage and that garage has a ceiling or, or something above the ceiling, which is a storage unit and you're converting that into an ADU. I don't know why we couldn't consider that to be a conversion, uh, since it's modifying an existing structure and have it.
Yeah, I don't know how the, how the state law interprets that, but, but that's something we do need to do further research on. Cause the handbook was finished in like July of twenty twenty two is what it was produced by HCD. And there was a number of new laws that came on after that. So it's not exactly up to date. So we've got to reconcile the two.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, the handbook's actually older than that. I think it dates back to twenty twenty, not twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
It is important to comment on this.
Just going to say that, that encouraging garage ADUs is something we want to do because it's not taking up new land and it's not building, you know, things, you know, four feet. So those are the kinds of things we want to encourage.
But there is an item on garage ADUs and we have forty three items to go through. We've spent twenty seven minutes on the first one.
Uh, should I text my wife and tell her I won't be home until four AM?
If I could, yeah, if I could just kind of, I, I'm not, I'm not gaveling us along, okay? So I just wanted to remind us because I think maybe some people might want to go watch the Warrior game tonight.
All right, moving on to item number two.
If we allow two ADUs on a two plus acre parcel, should we require deed restriction on the second ADU in addition to uh, requiring compliance with Atherton setbacks?
And then we, I think that some of the, the, the planning commission members need a little more context like I got last time on the rationale behind that. So the, the idea was there might be a way to have less density than splitting the lot and putting uh, uh, two units on it plus a JDU and ADU. So it would reduce the number that of impact from six to three. That's where the thinking came from, as Elizabeth described last time. That's where.
Did you meet with Elizabeth last night?
Uh, no, I just was here and listening to her last time.
Oh, last time? I thought you said last night.
It also would allow an additional housing unit on properties that are bigger, larger.
Right, correct.
And that can absorb that additional unit without, right, without much impact, right?
So.
I think there was general support the last time for allowing that second ADU.
But deed restricted.
Restriction was the question.
Yes.
So yeah or no?
Yes. Yeah. So we kind of agreed, but it seems to be a no brainer.
Uh, we're, we're not really voting on every one of these.
No, no, we're not providing good, good direction.
I think input, yes, Rick.
So I like the deed restriction idea. I, I, when I thought about this initially, I thought there's no way any Atherton resident wants to deed restrict anything in their property because it's controlling your private property in some manner. Uh, but then the more I thought about it, if we were to deed restrict for a limited period of time, ten or fifteen years, that the property wouldn't be rented or, or would be rented, that if rented, it would be rented at uh, at, at, not more than an affordable rate. It would have to be stated in a proper way. I think that deed restriction is not too great. And the reason, and in fact, it, it's, and especially if it's linked to a fee arrangement where, uh, people, I, I forgot what we're calling it. But um, if you deed restrict, then you avoid a fee, right?
A fee from whom?
Uh, the Affordable Housing Fund.
Oh, uh, if you provide a deed restricted unit, then it's not eligible for to be, to be, when you produce the units, I guess when you're remodeling your home, you're adding square footage, if you're deed restricting a unit, creating that affordable housing unit, that's, you don't have to pay the in loop fee for the inclusionary.
Right, right.
So I, that's a different issue, I understand. But uh, if in fact you're deed restricting for ten or fifteen years, most people are that these ADUs are going to be, mo- most people are trying to make money on. Most people are either giving them to family, uh, renting them at some reasonable rate to somebody that works for them or that they've come into contact with maybe from hip housing or because their kids um, met someone at a school and they're not trying to make money on them. I think in Atherton, it's very, very small, the number of uh, ADUs that are being rented at market rate, which the HCD has commented on what that market rate is, and it's, it's a high rate. Uh, so because of that, if the, the deed restriction might be very minimal in terms of its impact on our residents.
Fifty five years.
Not fifty five years, but I'd say five or ten years. I didn't understand the statement that said in the discussion of the length, that, that the town would have to replace every housing unit that falls off a deed restriction.
So that would be the next housing element. So we.
Yes, well, this one.
What we're concerned about is for every single housing element, we have to look at at risk units. And so if there are affordable housing, um, that are established via deed restriction, and then those deed restrictions are going to expire, we would have to outline that in the housing element. And that's why I was.
An account for replacement of that unit.
But why do we have to? I mean, they may not be rented. It's just a deed restriction. It doesn't mean it's rented.
No, but it's considered an affordable housing unit that we're counting on for our housing element. So if, if, for example, it's deed restricted tomorrow, and then in four years it falls off, we've lost that unit over the course of our eight year planning cycle. So we have to replace that somewhere in that planning cycle.
But if it, but if its term is for more than eight years, then that's not relevant.
Correct.
So you guys are recommending sixteen.
The next one anyway.
Yes.
If it's built in this.
So you guys are recommending sixteen. What have other cities done?
The typical is fifty five.
Fifty five is a typical.
Oh, boy.
Or affordable housing, not necessarily just ADUs, not necessarily for ADUs.
Yeah, that's why I think I agree with ten years and let's get, let's move on from there because, yeah, we can always get it done. You have a comment, public comment. Here we are.
Very quick. This is a deed restriction that that ADU has to be for low income.
Or rented at an affordable rate.
For low income.
Affordable.
Affordable, done. What happens to the property owner that wants to sell that house?
Deed restricted.
Don't quite, well, I know what happens.
Yeah.
I'm asking rhetorically because I think that that is a real burden for that seller to assume. Because I would have.
Then they don't have to build it. So it's a deterrent, maybe for them to build it.
Yeah.
And so that's, I think it's a good idea to do it. Personally, if you want my opinion, that was in coalition.
I think you need to consider, you know, the rights of that property owner, selling their property.
Can I just make sure I'm like fully understand the deed restriction? So.
I don't.
If it's, if it's a deed restriction, that means if you rent it out, it has to be at an affordable rate. You cannot rent it out for above that, but it doesn't mandate that it's rented or occupied.
Correct. And then we have an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Do you really want to take that on?
It's the enforcement issue isn't whether it's rented. The enforcement issue is whether it's rented or not.
We're going to come back to you.
It will, yes.
Okay.
Well.
Is it kind of basically just like a Vicky terms?
Well, of course, that's how it's, it's going to have to enforce this.
We have a.
Really enforce what we, what we have.
I agree.
This is.
Yeah. So Bill, can we come up with a different procedure unless, if we want to get through this, we can hold the public comment to the end and then all the notes can be taken and then we can have a thirty minute conversation and a forty five minute presentation at the end. But this way, we're never going to get through this. So we've got to go through it and again, go through our thrashing because this is our study session to make sure we understand the issues. We're not making any decisions today, but we got to talk through it or else we won't get there. So if we just put the public comment at the end, we can go through the items, we can hear about all the issues at the end, but this way we'll get through it. All right.
Carol, is that okay with you? Okay, Carol, it's an agreement.
All right.
Let's go through that then. Good point.
All right. Uh, were there any other comments on the deed restriction item?
Uh, you know, I think it'll be an issue, but I, I, I like the intent, but I think it'll be an issue because anything that looks like we're trying to bail out of the, of the plan at some point will probably be something that comes back to us, but it's worth, it's worth looking.
Hey, let's go on to three.
The third one.
Uh, the third one is, should we require eight foot fencing if the setback for any building is less than ten feet? Um, part of the challenge with that one is if it's a four foot setback that state requires and putting landscaping in may be difficult for um, egress in terms of fire safety. So that's one of the things that we wanted some policy direction on.
And it's more than that. It's, it's more the eight foot fencing. If it, the second part of that narrative there talks about uh, setting something different for the eight hundred square foot ADU versus something different for the twelve hundred square foot ADU. We need to be consistent with those objective standards. So yeah, you can require, or you could provide a standard for eight foot fencing, but that standard's going to apply universally.
I'm not sure that the eight foot fencing is going to add much value when we're building things that are sixteen to eighteen feet tall. Yeah, Rick.
Well, can't we provide rather than saying we must have eight foot fencing? Can't we provide that every, in every setback, there has to be at least eight foot screening? And that that screening can be provided either by planted material that will provide the screening or fencing.
As an objective standard.
That's an objective standard.
Right.
So if, so what that gets us is if in fact there's a four foot setback and they can't plant something in that four feet, then they've got to put in an eight foot fence. Because our objective standard is irregardless of what the setback is, you have to have eight foot screening. And that's, and, and we can state that that screening can be provided by planted material or fencing.
Or any.
That's a change in our current.
Right, so that would apply to all housing all through the town.
Yeah.
All right, detached structures of ten feet setback or less.
Okay, all right, great.
JADUs are interior to the main building, so their setbacks are bigger.
Okay, so.
All right, the question number four, should we enable, sorry. Yeah, should we enable removal of non oak heritage trees for any ADU, not just the eight hundred square foot ADU? Can we do anything to protect oaks from removal of the eight hundred square foot ADU? So this, I'll take the second part first. That answers no. Uh, state law says you can take down trees. Uh, but allowing the removal of non oak heritage trees for any other ADU, that's a, that's a policy call. So that's a policy discussion here.
So as lo- as long as we're prepared to hear the noise around redwoods going down, you know, that because the, what's going to happen is the redwoods are taking, going to take up the space. And everybody, when they look at their backyard or whatever, they look at the redwoods and they go like, this is beautiful, it's wonderful. And anytime we've had a redwood uh, knocking, knock, being knocked down at, at a planning commission meeting, it's, it's a, it's a party. So just, just so you know that that, that opens the door for that.
Yeah, my, my two cents on the trees is that, you know, Rick and I work together on the heritage tree. And there are some inconsistencies in it, such as, you know, depending on the size of the lot, things like that. Uh, you know, six foot PPZs versus eight foot versus ten foot, you know, make them all six foot first off. But I think that certain trees have different root, root structures. And I think that the, we should give more variance to, to the uh, arborist to make a decision based on the construction type. Now, I understand that she's not a construction engineer, but if somebody's putting down just some piers, well, that's not going to hurt the roots the same as you're going to dig a foundation. Or if you're just going to do a slab foundation, but a tree has very deep roots, well, that's not going to hurt them either. So I, yeah, I think it's a variable thing and maybe what we need to do is, is my two cents is let's go ahead and rework the heritage tree thing to put that variance in as opposed to put it into the ADU.
Right.
Thing. I don't know. What do you think? Anybody else?
That makes sense.
That's okay. We don't need to.
Not going to allow them to take out an oak tree for a twelve hundred square foot. Uh, I would say, yeah, don't let them do it.
Eight hundred square foot, we don't. Above eight hundred, we do.
But we need to redo the heritage tree. Yeah.
I, I, I agree with Bob. I, I think we should protect oak trees and, and what Eric raised is, well, how, how does that play with respect to redwoods? Cause that's the next most significant issue. And we have lots of people that actually have redwoods on their perimeter and if they put in an ADU, uh, I guess if it's an eight hundred square foot ADU, we can't do anything about it. They, they can take, they, they, if they, if somebody decides they want to get rid of a heritage tree, all they have to do is build an eight hundred square.
That's it. Yeah, that's all you have to do.
It's kind of expensive.
And keep it around your room, uh, uh, around your yard until you get all your.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, well, two things. One, this is an example where I don't think we should put it in the code that any a, and any eight hundred square foot ADU is exempt from the heritage tree ordinance. I don't think we have to say that. Uh, uh, if some, the, the question is, okay, if someone's going to build an ADU that's large, well, an ADU that complies with the ten foot setback, irregardless of what size it is, um, should we uh, um, keep our full heritage tree ordinance? And I would say we should keep it with respect to oaks for sure. Um, I think, and, and I'm really open to talking to everybody else about this, but I think we shouldn't keep it with respect to just any tree. Because right now, any tree that's a certain size is a heritage tree, right? And I mean, other than maybe eight trees that are, that are excluded.
Right.
But if you have a pine tree, that's a heritage tree. If, if you have a, there, there are all kinds of trees that we have, some of which qualifies heritage trees. And, and I think if we say that the heritage tree ordinance remains in effect for uh, every ADU that is uh, ten, that complies with our setbacks, then people are going to build eight hundred square foot ADUs. If, if they don't want the heritage tree and they're just going to move it to four feet, which is what we don't want.
Right.
So I, 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 I think we need to be thoughtful about that. Uh, because we, we would prefer people to build ADUs that are, that use the ten foot setback. I don't care what size they are. We, we want to keep the ten foot setback.
Yeah, well, uh, just for what it's worth, I, I don't think the planning commission had, had a lot of feeling that, that, uh, that, that was not given to us by the tree committee. So if we were trying to, when, when I, I was on the, on the commission when that was going on and I, you know, Randy, I think you were too, which was, and Nancy, maybe you were too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so it, it lasted, that, that process lasted like two and a half years to go through that. All right. And, and so a lot of it was the pushback on the community that the results were, but it wasn't because the planning commission said, hey, you know, we, we couldn't come up with other ways to save a tree or choose a tree that would be eliminated. It was because the pushback from the community was these trees don't get touched and these trees don't. And so some of these, some of these, what I would think would be smart construction choices and on, you know, uh, different peer types of approaches and, and where can a pad be used instead, instead of digging down? All those, all those things were something that the planning commission looked at, but because of the recommendation from the joint committee, um, we, we, we went with them based on their expertise. But it was, I think what's, what it's done, it's helped, it's helped staff with the, with the process of approvals or not. Uh, but it's also put more pressure in situations like this where the outcome might be, okay, we'll take the eight hundred square feet and put it on the, on the street. You know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it, it's worth looking at now with the new reality, but it's also, I think, definitely the case that we don't put it as part of this. You know, we run a parallel process on that. And then if anybody comes forward, they, we have the new or, we have the existing ordinance to modify or mod, or get direction on, uh, for other types of things. We can give people an exception on the tree if they put them over here, for example.
So the summary, summarization is oak trees now, everything else, you know, we're going to, it's going to, it might happen, it may not, but we should look at the heritage tree and then go ahead and make those changes so that Sally would have the right to change stuff or we eliminate other trees other than oak.
I, I think what we say on this is no, we're not going to change anything on the AD, uh, the ADU code. And then leave it at that and on a separate meeting with a separate.
Okay.
View of it there. That way it doesn't get confused that it's anywhere associated with ADU.
Great. Well, we need to have the action item that we're going to get back together on that heritage tree thing. Next one is another heritage tree, number five.
Item number five, should we eliminate the site heritage tree inventory for an ADU permit? Are there other tree related items we can change? And I think, uh, as Eric was mentioning, there are some other items that we can address within the heritage tree ordinance. But the site heritage tree inventory question uh, is, is a policy call. I mean, as you know, right now, you're, if you scrape a site and you're going to put a home in, you're required to provide the site inventory of all the trees on your property as well as those on adjacent property. But if you're just building an ADU, you're probably still also required to provide that whole site tree inventory. Maybe we look at a way to just do it as a, a radius around the ADU and that's all that's required at that particular point in time.
Yeah, I was, I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, that's a huge expense to the, to the homeowner to have the whole place done. And, and it's much more reasonable to say, okay, do it. It also may be part of the discussion to help with the assist of where the ADU goes.
Well, it's, it's important to the neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, because all they're going to do is cut the roots uh, of a tree that's over there and that's on the border, that's providing screening, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so I agree, we need to come up with a radius and I, let's let planning come up with that idea.
We can address that, right? All right. Number six, should we remove any arborist fee as well as planning fees for ADU permits? Are there other fees? Uh, staff suggests capping or waiving the planning fees only, basically reducing them, not waiving them. And the council would, uh, the council can approve a cap to reduce building permit. However, in staff's experience, the actual town fees are not the barrier. There are other agency fees, there are connection fees, PG&E fees, all of those things can be costly, but the town's actual fees are not the barrier. So, but it's a policy call.
Well, my, my, my two cents is, uh, um, if manpower is involved, then they have to pay for that manpower. Um, you know, can. You know, can't be a gift of taxpayer dollars, no matter what, it cannot be. And so, yes, we can reduce many of the things that has to happen, and I think we should, we should have, you know, very quick reviews on some things that don't take manpower, so that the overall fees would be lower. But if an inspector has to go out and inspect the connection, even if it's a prefab house, he's gotta drive out there, he's gotta spend a couple hours looking at the thing, he's gotta write a report and give him the certificate. Those two to three to four hours that he's out there need to be paid for, and there shouldn't be a gift of the, of the neighbors that aren't doing an ADU. That's my two cents, and I'm a little more conservative than most. Yeah, Rick?
Yeah, so I have something of a different perspective, which is, I thi- I, I really heard what Greta Underberg said at our last meeting. And I've heard Carol say this, and, and I do think that some of the perspective is sort of a total fee perspective, and that includes the fees that are charged by the fire district and by other agencies that we have no control over. What we do have control over are the fees that we charge. And, uh, the building fees, you know, are, are, are outsourced, so our arrangement is a percentage of fee. And so that's kind of a hard one to, for us to reduce. But I do think that we, it is involving time, uh, which Bill just addressed, and, and if we cover those fees, it is a subsidy. And it's a subsidy saying, okay, we want to spend some town money to encourage people to build ADUs, which I'm okay with. I mean, I don't know how else we're gonna get ADUs built than really taking seriously, making the application process easy, making every aspect of the thing easy. Uh, and that includes having some modular units approved that will greatly reduce the fee process and, and it includes minimizing the fees, and it includes a, uh, application or whatever that is easy, not complex. So I'm in favor of waiving the planning fees, and, and I, I think we control the arborist fees too. And to the extent that there, and I think we should reduce the scope of the arborist fees to just around the ADU. But I'm in favor of waiving those fees, because I don't think we're subject to the same issue as the building fees, which is a percentage based deal.
Can we afford to do that?
You have a conservative mayor, but from my perspective, I, I don't think it's a big deal. The other thing about this is, my whole thing about our housing plan is to look good in the first two years. To look at like we're, we're doing, uh, uh, something amazing that nobody expected us to do. So they're saying, you've gotta come up with multifamily, you've gotta come up this, or else you won't be able to hit your plan. My, my thinking on this, this area is that we put a two-year window on it, or a one-year window on it. And so there's this mad rush to the door to get everybody doing their ADUs now. Alright, so that trickles over the next three years, but what it does is, when they come back and say, well, how you doing on your plan? Well, we got a hundred ADUs right now, and we got an eight-year plan, and we're, you know, we're two, we're, you know, we're twenty, twenty percent of the way through, and, you know, our time, so our storyline gets really good out of the box. So then that also gives the state time to figure out that this is a really bad law, this is written poorly, with a lot of things that are gonna, be discovered by communities early on who try to just jam stuff in. So what I'm, what I'm trying to look at, thinking about doing on this whole process is incentivize, and then watch to see what really happens as we get downstream. So the, by putting a time limit on it, it says, hey, gang, we're open for business, but hurry up and do it now, it's a closeout set.
So you're in favor of waiving fees?
I am.
Okay, fine. I don't have a problem on my, it's gained a lot of time.
I see it, I see it as an invest, you're a business person, so, and so am I, so I would say it's a, it's the investment side of the, of the spending, not, not the spending o- only.
I have a, I have a question, um, for the arborist fees, I agree with you on the, all of that. I, my question for the arborist fees, we only have one Sally, and so having no fees for arborists, is that gonna create like an exceptional amount of workload for her, that we're gonna maybe need another arborist to handle this kind of, like, that's usually fees slow people down from having excessive requests, I'm just curious, I haven't had to deal with the.
Well, I think if Sally needs assistance, she does have the availability of west coast arborists or other arborists to help with the inspection component of it, or plan review component of it, I don't think it'd be a huge deal if we have a fire set. Any other comments on? Item number seven, can we remove the reference to ovens in the kitchen definition? How can we simplify the definition to give more discretion to property owners? Staff's recommending that we use the state definition for kitchens for efficiencies in JADUs, uh, as well as the state definition for all others, and I can flip that on the screen for the primary ones, which are your ADUs. The only thing that the state says with respect to a kitchen is an accessory dwelling unit means an attached or detached residential dwelling unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, and is located on a lot with a proposed or existing primary residence. It shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel, dot, dot, dot. So it doesn't provide any specifics with respect to what those eating and cooking facilities are. And so we would have that same definition within our code, and then provide some examples of what we think about when we think about a ADU kitchen.
But a permanent provision would kind of imply not a hot plate, to me.
It, it would imply that, and that's what our four examples would, would be, because we don't necessarily want a hot plate in a microwave oven to be a kitchen. Yeah, and a substandard extension cord with a hot plate on the end of it, not a good idea.
Right.
Seventeen nine five eight dot one. In which.
Subsection three.
Subsection.
Efficiency unit means.
Efficiency unit, efficiency units are JADUs. They provide a little more definition around what a kitchen is. And so we would include that too.
Efficiency unit include an ADU that is a detached unit that is a studio?
Detached ADU is an ADU regardless of the size. If it's in a JADU, it's interior to the main structure, and it's limited to five hundred square feet, and the JADUs have the efficiency kitchens requirement, right?
Yes, efficiency units are, this is where the state kind of starts to mix our language. So ADUs have normal kitchens, and then junior ADUs can have efficiency kitchens, which is a much looser language, and then there's also the efficiency unit, which the standard is a hundred fifty square feet, it's like a mini, like a mini unit, yeah, like a dorm room.
Why don't we just go with the staff, what your recommendation is, does anyone care? Yeah, we gotta start deciding if we care on some of this stuff, cause why do we care?
Well, I, I think the, the issue is that we've had some comments that people would like more specificity, and it, if the, the specificity of what is a kitchen is that it includes a cooking unit, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I think we're gonna get some people saying, well, that's a microwave.
I think it's also gonna apply when people are trying to convert their pool houses. It's like my pool house right now has a mini fridge, a countertop convection oven, and an induction hot plate. So none of those are permanent, but they are cooking appliances, so could I just fill out a form and be an ADU? I think is the question, my question.
How big is it?
I don't know.
It's a detached pool house, so.
A detached pool house.
But, but yes, the answer to that would be yes, you would.
Be able to convert.
Yeah.
Sweet.
I mean, I think. Maximum discretion to the homeowner.
Somebody's living there.
It's okay.
Speaking of the mic, yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be frustrated, I'm just trying to go, we're gonna be here for.
Well, it's important, we get, we air this out, because at the last meeting, Randy, you weren't here, but there was a lot of consternation about not airing it out, or just moving it, okay?
I mean, we have one person from the public here and no one online.
Uh, there was some discord amongst the council members.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, alright, any other questions on the kitchen one? Item number eight, where should the ADU entrance be, and how does that change if above a car facility? Council commission may wish to consider requiring entrances to be located away from neighboring property owners where feasible. That's where at the last meeting, we talked about that compromise of interior to the lot where feasible. Uh, and you may wish to require entrances to be on the ground floor for any ADUs that may be above the garage or carport, to prevent second floor balconies from overlooking adjacent properties. But that's a policy issue as well. That we can't apply to, that we can't apply to the eight hundred square foot.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I'd like to see all the entrances and all the, I'd like to see all the windows and the entrances all be interior or front facing, that's how I'd like to see it, because then it's away from the neighbors, you don't have a problem. With regards to something above the garage, you know, George has mentioned to me, having an interior staircase, that's a good idea. I don't know that, how that would work if somebody was converting a garage, it may not, but if they're gonna have a staircase that's on the outside, then it's gotta be, you know, adjacent to the house or something like that, but those are my two cents, okay? Anybody else?
So I, I don't understand exactly, so the proposal is that ADUs and JADUs would not have the entrance facing the front of the property. Is that correct?
Should be interior to the site or the, or the front.
Should be interior to the, the side or the back?
Facing inward from the lot, not in that ten foot setback or that four foot setback.
Not facing into a neighbor, at a neighbor.
Right.
Okay, so it should be interior, and if it's an ADU that is built on top of a garage, for example, where the only sidewall that makes sense is facing, uh, the side or rear lot, usually I would think the side lot, then the staircase would be interior, even though the entrance would be not interior. And that, the, the staircase would be inside the facility.
Right, you'd enter into a door and then go upstairs, on the first floor.
Can you physically do that in a two-car or three-car garage?
Well, according to one of our public commenters, we have.
Use that space.
Really big garages in town, so.
But your average garage, I, I was shocked when you told me how small an average garage is.
That's where I live, here, they're bigger.
But even so, I worry that we're gonna create things here that's gonna, that's our, in my view, that's the optimal ADUs we want, is over garage. They're not taking up new land, they're not taking up, you know, any, and it's not a new building. So if we make it so that you can't do it in an existing garage, because you can't still use it as a garage, so let's say you wanna use it as a garage, where are you gonna put the staircase? I don't know, I know in my garage, and I have a three-car garage, I don't think I could fit a staircase and still use it as for cars. So now.
You could, you just like a two-car garage.
Well, you could also do, do it outside the building, like you see in some apartments.
Has to be in the inside, they're saying.
Well, but you, all you do is build.
Entrance is on the side, you don't want the staircase, uh, the, the setback's gonna be ten feet. You don't want the staircase going into the ten foot setback on the outside of the facility.
But the inside is near your house, so if you actually look at this.
Well, yeah, but you're the one with the ADU.
So you'd have to use up one of your carports.
Well, or, or put it on the outside of the house and build a structure around the stairwell, stairwell. So it would be just like a tunnel up to the, up to the second floor, which is, which is a design capability.
So how does the setback work if you enclose it? If you're doing a stairwell on the outside of the garage in the setback, and then you enclose it, then you're.
And if it's enclosed, it also counts as floor area.
Even if it's enclosed.
If you were to look at the layout of yards, the average, you've got the garages over here on the side, and there's your neighbor, that's probably the more typical. You guys are no more.
Ten foot.
Than me, ten foot, that's correct. But on this side's usually the house.
That's right.
And on this side, there's usually like a little, whatever you call that thing that connects it to the house, that makes it so you don't walk outside in the rain. So whatever that thing is on this side, you guys are saying, where, where am I gonna put my staircase? If I don't put it over here in that ten feet, I can't put it on the breezeway to my house.
But it's internal.
But the problem is, is it enough square footage?
You get an ADU and you change your, your garage from a three-car garage to a two-car garage.
So then I'd have to build a carport for my third car, or?
Well, yes, I did.
It's all electric cars, I have to have my, near my electric plugs. I, I don't know, I think, I think this one we need to look a little bit more what we're, without saying, I don't wanna say off the top of my head, without knowing how many cases that's gonna prohibit people from.
We can run, move that through the process based on the feedback.
That's a, that's a good input, that's a good input, but we can't, can't customize things to our personal needs.
Of course, of course.
I think Diana's right, though, and I think the big issue with stairwells that are on within the setback is privacy, so if it's an enclosed tunnel, like, then it's not a privacy issue if it's enclosed, right?
That's actually a good idea, because one of the things I was, on what you're going, that second story window that's facing that neighbor, I, I don't want them to have that window. So we don't have anything in here that says you can't have that window looking down. If we put the staircase there, most people will put the staircase there, and they close it in, and now you don't have a line of sight issue. So I, that's why I think this all needs to be looked at a little bit more of the cases.
I agree. Good. Alright, um, should we give planning, uh, I guess this is number nine. Should we give planning discretion regarding ADU sizing above a garage or carport? Staff recommends that ADUs be ministerial and based on objective code criteria. I think we've kinda talked around this one already this evening. Number ten, should we reduce the side setback from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet if a JADU takes up space? JADUs are all interior to the main building, in the main building footprint. You can't add a JADU on the exterior of the property, cause that would then be an attached ADU, not a JADU. It's interior to the current building footprint.
Wait, 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 I don't understand that. If you have a JADU, it has to have a separate entrance.
No.
A JADU doesn't have to have a separate entrance?
You're, you're correct, it does have to have an exterior.
So if, if you have a JADU, I, I, I don't understand what you just said. It's gonna have a separate entrance, and, um, what, i- if you have a, a property that doesn't have a JADU, you, you could add a JADU to that property, it would be attached.
So, the I, the idea of a JADU is to be, it's supposed to be integral to the house. So let's say you had a four-bedroom house, and you converted one of the bedrooms into a JADU. So it'd still be part of the house, and it'd have like a efficiency kitchen, and you would still have an external access to the house. But it, the way the state code is written, it's supposed to be part of the house.
But I understand that, but let's say you have a four-bedroom house, and you decide to add five hundred square feet, and make that five, and, and push out from wherever you decide to push out five hundred square feet, and that five hundred square feet's gonna be in a, a JADU.
Yes, that can be done, but what staff is recommending is that the setbacks be maintained for the main house for the JADU, because it's kind of part of the house, that, that's sort of the, what the state had intended.
So then talk, talk about the difference between that and an attached A, A, ADU.
So if you have an attached ADU, then you have to have like a, a normal kitchen. You can still, um, attach it to the house and have an internal connection, but it's not integral to the house. So for example, an ADU has to be a completely separate unit, um, separate bathroom, separate kitchen. Whereas a JADU, you can actually share the bathroom and have an internal connection.
So, so this, so the difference would be, and what you were talking about, I think, is the idea that on eight, an attached ADU, which I think actually is a good idea, because again, it pulls this, the setback, it tells, pulls it back away from the curb. So if I took, if I have a, a bathroom and a bedroom on the corner of the house, and I say, okay, that's gonna be the ba- the bathroom and bedroom for my ADU, I attached ADU, and then I build a kitchen and living room on the front with a door, then I've got an attached ADU. I'd rather have that than eight hundred square feet on the curb. So that, that's when I would want to have the, the ability to have a twenty-five foot setback, rather than a thirty-five setback. Because then I'm saying, rather than be on the curb, you get your eight hundred square feet, it's cheaper for you to do, because you're building out what's already there, and, and you get a setback variance, or well, not variance, technically be a setback, you know.
How, how are you going to then stop people who are saying, oh, well, that's gonna be a JADU at the front of the house? Make the closer to the curb, and then, and then after it's built, refurbish it, just like, just like today, people say, they put it in a basement and they don't finish it. And then after the tax collector comes in and says it's, you know, non-livable space, and then they finish it.
Yeah, I mean, the enforcement of that was, is the issue.
Yeah, and we don't have people to run around there, I think it's cleaner to just say, you know, the, the, the main house is the main house is the main house.
So what state law says.
You're saying leave it at thirty-five?
Yes.
I just think we're creating a mess here for planning.
Yeah, so what state law says is what's in that section six five eight five two point two two. Yeah, so what state law says is what's in that section six, five, eight, five, two point two, two, eight, four. The ordinance for a JADU shall require a permitted junior accessory dwelling unit to be constructed within the walls of the proposed or existing single family residence.
Right.
That's for a JADU. It's different if it's an attached.
What's the requirement on attached ADU by the state law?
Uh, there's nothing by state law, but, um, the Atherton Municipal Code allows for a twenty percent incursion into the side yard setback for a attached.
All right, good. That's all I want to know.
So number eleven, what TPZ changes make sense to encourage ADU developments? Modify the ordinance to eliminate the TPZ differences between R one A versus R one B. We've posted in there the TPZ Heritage Tree Preservation Standards and Specifications. And as Chair Lane indicated, that's gone through a iterative process over the years. Um, but that's where it's come out and I think the recommendation is to make it consistent between the R one A and the R one B with respect to tree protection zones.
And by making it consistent though, that you can go one way or the other.
Yes.
So it's a policy call as to which way it goes.
Correct.
And that'll come before the planning commission. That's fine.
Right. Item number twelve.
The plan.
Eliminate the requirement that plans be submitted in physical form as well as online. Planning doesn't need the physical plans except for subdivisions. And most building permits allow for an online submittal, but some do still require physical plans. Building is trying to transition entirely over to the electronic format now, but they do still require some stamped plans for some processes.
What are those processes?
Uh, right now, he says.
So for now, um, building permit issuance, um, we still require, um, the paper plan. So the building department would stamp off all of them. We would give one to the applicant and they would have it on site and then we would keep one, um, at the town. And we're, I think the building department is wanting to go completely digital so that we would have the stamp plans on like an iPad. And so, um, the building inspectors would be able to do their inspections that way.
The way the world's going.
Yeah, moving in that direction.
No, that, I mean, this comment came from resident feedback that took weeks because they had trouble getting the physical copy stamped.
Right.
That's good.
Uh, let's see, we're on to number thirteen. Make the application process more user friendly. Eliminate the monthly arborist reports. Carol's clapping her hands over there. It should be done quarterly and no filing required if there's no change.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was, that was, was one that the planning commissioner actually was thinking that would be a way to go. Early on, it was a way to ma- manage what was an issue with repeated, uh, trees going down after construction. Basically they were cut. Oh, oh shoot, it was, it was cut. That's too bad. So there was a lot, there was an intensity to do that, but that was supposed to be just a, by a short term assessment.
Right, so it, it's still going on to this day. It's a monthly requirement. Now, the, the concerns are exactly what you talked about, that accidents happen in the field, trees disappear if it's done quarterly. Who knows what happens in that quarter, um, but it's a policy call.
This issue did come up to us just in my neighborhood recently, that where we had this very problem on, on Stockbridge where somebody's doing stuff for trees and so it does come up to us. So this is a real thing.
Yeah, the technique that I've seen the most used most frequently is over pruning. Oh shoot, I over pruned it. The tree's dead. And I saw that, uh, in two houses in our neighborhood.
So is there a way to protect without?
Complaining that people, uh, residents have to complain. That's the only, uh, that's the flag for enforcement.
Okay.
Were they palm trees? Hey, we're not, because I would have called them though.
All right, so is there, uh, consistent feedback to try and mitigate that and reduce the requirement?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, item fourteen, can we create a list of specific criteria for over the garage ADUs? We just kind of talked through that one as well, so if you move past that. Item fifteen, how big of an over garage ADU should we allow? I think we talked about that one as well. Right along here. Number sixteen, can we discuss fence height requirements for the four foot ADU scenario? What's the highest? Eight to ten feet, twelve feet? What's the highest? Doesn't look bad. I think we talked about this already as well in terms of fencing with the eight foot recommendation. We'll bring that back through the planning process. Uh, seventeen, what screening plant requirements will have, will we have for the four foot and the ten foot? Are they different? Can you actually plant things in the four foot? There was an image, uh, I don't know if anyone's been around to that ADU that was put in the front yard uh, on Alameda de Las Pogas.
Yeah.
They have four foot away. It's a little bit wider than this table here. So I think it would be a little challenging to plant within that. So that's where the fence height screening comes in.
Yeah.
Uh, eighteen, do we need a poolhouse exception for an ADU? Wouldn't it be the same as any other? It's the same. Uh, new foundation technology allows us to plant trees closer. I think we talked about this as well. Uh, providing some sort of process to allow the arborist and the building official to assess, uh, a footing requirement for an ADU to allow them to get closer to that tree.
Right, and then she can lay in the different types of trees with the different types of root structures.
Right.
Because the way we're wording this here is we're just punting it to her. So every single one is going to go in front of her and is that going to create a bottleneck? And shouldn't we try to find the ones that we know are going to come up over and over again, like if they're set fabricated kinds of we were talking about before?
I think that'll come from experience as, as foundation types do make their way through the process. There may be a way to say, okay, this one, this one does, so you can do this pretty easily. But I think it's going to take some experience.
And the focus is on oak trees for us. That's, we already decided, you know, a half hour ago.
Well, but the thing, the, the approach on that, I think, which I, I like where you're going with it, is the idea that we could do that now. We could, we can encourage different kinds of, of, uh, of foundation types. And then we have an exception process right now and we can experiment with the, with the, you know, exception process where they come forward to the planning commission and say, we would like to use this when we get closer. And then we can, then along with the arborists, we can actually, uh, we can actually experiment with it while, while we're using the current regulations. While we're also in a parallel process, looking at whatever modification of the tree. That way we get to experiment with it. You know, we find out that it works or doesn't work and then we don't make it a change to the policy until we are ready for the policy. Does that work?
Good.
All right.
So then are we saying we'd have like a, like a worksheet or something on the website? I'm just wondering how that knowledge would then be shared with someone who wants to build an ADU outside of coming in front of the planning commission? Is that something where staff would create some kind of worksheet on the website and update it periodically with?
Well, they normally come with their plans, the staff. It's not the other way around. People don't come in and say, I want to build an ADU. What do you suggest?
Architects are going to do ninety percent. They're going to know. I mean, there's about, what, twenty of them that do work in town.
Yeah.
That's your answer.
So they'll know.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're going to.
Word will, word will get around quickly. We also have the monthly builders roundtable where that'll come up as well.
Yeah.
And also staff can provide some materials, um, like quick reference guides for ADUs to help, um, architects and developers.
I, I, I think there's two issues. One is we need to be clear about what the arborist could make the call on. Rather than it having to come to planning commission, because I don't want to throw all of this stuff before the planning commission. There's already enough tree removal issues.
Right.
For the planning commission. So to the extent that we can set it up in the code so the arborist can make the call, I think that's good. And secondly, I think we need to be clear that where there is a complaint, like one that would initiate a code enforcement, then it's going to be looked at. Even though, uh, there's not the monthly requirement. Or if we use the language that was in here, that it's a quarterly requirement, although if there's no change, then you don't have to file an arborist report. Uh, I, I'm okay with that, but we have to be clear that if there's a complaint, then it's going to require an arborist report, which that could be a problem because you could have some neighbor disputes. Where somebody starts to complain and the result is that their neighbor has to incur a bunch of arborist reports.
Right.
But I think where there's a complaint, there, it has to get looked at.
Right.
We, we could also potentially then, uh, also come up with a different review requirement for the new, uh, foundation type for, for, for the implementation period, like a year or two years. Saying, okay, every time this foundation type is, is, uh, is used, this is the review process. It's monthly and the other ones are quarterly. So that's the other trade off. You, you're not quarterly, you don't use that foundation type if you want, and you comply. If you want, if you want monthly, then you might want to think about using your peer or whatever options are. That way the, the developer or the landowner gets a choice, uh, and we get to find out if those things work.
But as, as, as George pointed out, most of the time the architects have worked with the town and they know.
Yeah.
And so it's going to occur over time and, and, uh, you know, I don't think somebody goes to an architect and says, well, I want this versus that because I have these trees, you know, so I, I, you know, and we may have to amend things as time goes on. Okay, but.
Yeah, it wasn't the architect that were the problem. It was the person, uh, digging the ditch. Yeah, that was the problem.
Yeah, and, and it's not going to just be Sally that would review these. We would probably need Robert or the building official to weigh in on foundation and engineering requirements.
All right, I think we don't have anything to say about number twenty.
All right, number twenty, if you have asked about tax costs and blanket tax agreement, is this possible or feasible? The answer is no. This is a state law revenue and tax code. It would take a legislative change to address that. Uh, tw- twenty one, do we still have a dishwasher requirement? Again, that's back to the state definitions, so that's not in there. Item twenty two, what is the front setback for a greater than eight hundred square foot ADU? It's a hundred and twenty feet or thirty foot behind the line of the main structure for detached accessory structures. That's current code. Twenty three, do we have rules for ADU hardscape, uh, porch, walkways, et cetera? Uh, we do not have specific hardscape rules for ADUs, but we do have lot coverage limitations in the, uh, park and open space and public facilities, uh, zoning districts and all parts of an ADU would need to meet setbacks. Any questions on that one? Twenty four, where do we end up with rules around the entries? I think we talked about this one already. Uh, twenty five, do we call out any rules on prefab or are they the same? They're the same manufactured units as part of state law?
But wait, before we leave that one, I, I just want to encourage that, I'm not sure how we do this exactly, but that we identify a couple models that, uh, we can recommend.
Yeah.
To, uh, home property owners and, and that we make sure that the process around those models is, lot, lots of things are already approved. So that they can kind of just bear, almost ministerially walk through it.
We are talking with, uh, some ADU builders out there to try and get some pre-plan check processes from the workshop that we had here. Uh, there were a couple vendors that waved their card around and we're talking about doing those as well. Uh, and then on the town's website, we do have some links to some resources for the public. Uh, that includes, I need to correct that spelling, a bodu ADUs and ono mobile bar ADUs.
So Hart Housing has.
Yeah, Hart we have up here. Hello Housing and Hart Housing.
Cause they have.
Plans.
Plans.
Yeah. We provide links to those resources to the public as well. But will, but speed plan checking, some pre-approved, uh, ADUs to speed up that process. We're working on that as well. Is it, I was not clear, uh, where we ended up on subdivising, subdividing the utilities. That's per code and state law. That wasn't any changes.
Which is just a safe, uh, for the, for the planning.
That's on where are those at? Utilities?
Subdividing the utility.
A separate meters requirements and.
Which could, yeah, so some of these pre-built, some of these pre-built houses, they just want to run it off the, the primary house.
So what's the answer? The state code doesn't address it?
State code does, I think, in some area.
That's for new construction, right? So if I'm, again, with my poolhouse, which apparently maybe is an ADU, I wouldn't have to retroactively add new utility to have it be counted as an ADU, right?
I believe the current state standard is that it's up to the property owner to decide whether to separately meter utilities.
One more time address.
I believe currently the standard is that it's up to the property owner to decide whether or not to separately meter utilities for an ADU or JADU.
And what about sewer?
Uh, it's a connection.
That would be, that would be one of, that would be one of the utilities I'm talking about for that.
Uh, owner occupancy, that's also per state law. That's addressed within the, uh, twenty twenty five. I think it's got to be, one of the units has to be owner occupied. Uh, twenty eight.
Opposite though, George, it said that we could not determine that it be or, or owner occupied. So.
Until twenty twenty five.
Until twenty twenty five.
But then it's up to us after that date. So do we have an opinion on that? Are we going to punt and not discuss?
I thought we said we would do it after twenty twenty five.
That's in our current.
We decided that last night.
Okay, that's in our current code. Uh, is there anything we can do about an ADU on the front property line if under eight hundred square feet? The answer is no. Uh, twenty nine.
Except to incentivize other options.
Yeah, that's, that's the only, that's the only. Can we charge premium fees for ADUs with four foot setbacks? The answer is no. Uh, where are we on the gas for ADUs? It's, uh, electric ready only. Gas is okay.
Yeah, so we had somebody coming for us, uh, the, on the planning commission that had a problem with that. Uh, they were trying to put a gas kitchen in and there was some, some.
It's been corrected.
Well, it depends on when they, uh, came through because the Berkeley decision is relatively recent.
Okay, well, it's before that.
Yeah.
Good. All right, super.
Uh, thirty one, there are areas of town that are zoned R one A that should be zoned R one B. You don't know all the differences yet, but how does that play into the ADU discussion? So, um, it doesn't, uh, but land use and zoning destinations aren't solely lot size based. It's more of a long-term global planning decision where specific zones would be. Uh, so we wouldn't change a lot from R one A to R one B just because it's a smaller lot size throughout the town. Uh, thirty two, can we eliminate TPZ issues entirely when an ADU is built on a slab? We've talked about that one as well, providing that exception process. Thirty three, what can we do to encourage architectural style and finish to match the rest of the property? Uh, nothing on the eight hundred square foot or less. In fact, some of those would be prefab and just dropped in and it could be any kind of architecture. Uh, but the town does have a little bit of a discretion with respect to objective criteria for larger ADUs.
Let me ask a question. So for communities that have architectural review.
Yeah.
Do they not apply to eight hundred square foot or less ADUs?
No design standards unless they're objective standards could be applied. There's no review process.
Use Coca-Cola signs tilted up.
Uh, thirty four, does the ADU require direct driveway access? Uh, direct driveway access is not required. Parking can be on the property anywhere. Uh, parking requirements, thirty five, can we require more available on-street onsite parking for over eight hundred square foot ADUs? Uh, there is state law around six, five, eight, five, two point two XI. Parking requirements for ADUs shall not exceed one parking space per accessory dwelling unit or one per bedroom, uh, whichever is less.
But we're, we're saying that this required at one.
One per bedroom, right, whichever is less. Thirty six, drainage requirements preventing onsite and offsite, uh, rainwater drainage issues. It's not a zoning issue per se, but it, it, um, there are stormwater requirements for buildings and detention basins and.
If you put down hardscape, you gotta have a way to retain the water.
Yeah.
At your displaced.
Pervious and impervent surfaces, et cetera.
Well, this will be a bigger issue on the, on the street front ones than it will be on some of the other properties. Because you, you, all of a sudden you got roofs dumping onto the street, right, right directly. So, and then with some of the streets we have, they don't really have gutters. They just got gulches, uh, followed by.
Most of the streets.
Yeah.
Not some.
So we'll, we'll have to watch this because I've already seen, you know, we already know we've got a, you know, corner, corners are flooded all over town. This area, so make them more exciting.
Neighbor privacy concerns, plant screening, window placement, et cetera. I think we talked about this one as well.
The windows issue, we can't do anything with the windows issue on the eight hundred square foot ones. We can though on the, on the over eight hundred square foot.
I believe we do as well, right?
On our current ADUs.
Have to look.
Yeah.
We talked about it last night. We said, we don't want people looking and tell the neighbors, we got to have a privacy.
I, I'm not familiar with any code of that. I know that we finesse it with other trade offs to get that as the outcome. But I don't know, I personally don't know of any code that says that.
It was a comment from the, from the HCD letter in our review of the first ADU ordinance that they did not want the town to have any, um, regulations regarding windows.
Yeah, but we want, we don't want to have, if it's over eight hundred square feet and we're allowed to change things, we want to have it to where you can go ahead and, um, make it interior or front facing, the same as, you know, and George and I went over this before. You know, when they talk about if it's near a transit stop, it's a transit stop, not a transit route. Because if it's on a transit route, they may have to walk more than a half mile to get to where the stop is to get the bus. And I think that's a defendable solution and we should put that in our, in our response. It's a transit stop. The, all the places are within a half mile of the transit stop, not the transit route.
Yeah, so not El Camino would be specifically.
All of El Camino, it would be.
The specific bus stop.
Right, there's three or four bus stops there and so it's a half mile from those bus stops.
So staff is looking into what El Camino or any of our other major corridors that have bus routes on them qualify as? If they qualify as a major transit stop under the state law or not.
What are we talking about?
The eighteen.
I'm heading on something else, okay? No big deal. You're not lost, Eric.
No, I'm sitting there going, I, I'm not looking, I'm looking for something here.
So he's looking at, he's looking at actual number thirty seven. He was looking at that one where it talks about allowing the eighteen foot for a detached ADU on one that is within one half mile of one mile walking distance of a major transit stop or high quality transit corridor as defined.
Okay.
So we that.
If it's a high quality transit corridor.
The state has specific guidelines. It's the frequency of the buses.
It's El Camino and Middlefield. Although Middlefield can be questionable.
As a boost to the process, we'll look at that. There is, there is another definition that the state has for public transit, which is on the screen there. That's public transit is location including but not limited to a bus stop or train station where the public may access buses, trains, subways, et cetera. That charge set fares run on a fixed schedule. El Camino would certainly qualify under that definition of public transit. As would possibly other streets, but that is is in relation to parking standards, not.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's train routes, then even though we don't have a train stop, then everybody that's within a half mile of the railroad tracks also gets counted.
Right. Fee standards, fee waiver, fee reduction to start unit production. This one I think we talked about as well. Thirty nine, clarifying access options, units facing on another street address. This is the the two street scenario for a lot that has two frontages. The fire district was here at the last meeting. They do have concerns about that address coming to another street. I don't think it's an insurmountable issue, but it is, from my perspective, it's more of a land use issue because you've got that property owner that has a house and they fence off that ADU on their back forty and it now faces that other street. Now they're dealing with on-street parking and that sort of thing. And if it's a larger lot, now we've allowed two ADUs. So they can have another one on the other side facing that frontage with on-street parking. And now those neighbors may have parking concerns that they never used to have.
But they'd have that anyway, wouldn't they? If you build those, you're still going to assume that people are going to have cars and whether you say which the entrance way is, it's not going to make.
That's, that's what the complaint will be. People will complain about it because the cars will be on the street and now suddenly it will look like.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, a common land use issue than a fire issue, but it is something to discuss.
But I'm, I'm thinking of different lots. I actually specifically think of one in my own neighborhood where, where it would be much better to have back, back exit. They have room for an ADU that looks like a house in Redwood City like three blocks away to face on one street. And then they're not using this narrow driveway that they're using right now as the in and exit for the ADU, the ADU and the home. So and if you're, if your one side is Encina, the other side is, but you know, Benita or whatever the streets would be. You know, the, the fire department's going to know, we're going to go to the eight seventy five Benita and then, and then they'll go to the Encina if the other address. So as long as we designate the address and it makes sense from a ingress, an ingress egress perspective, it doesn't seem to be, it seems to be better planning.
I agree with that.
But I want, I want to understand how it works right now. Right now, if somebody buys a lot, that lot has an address.
Right.
And if that lot is able, is adjacent to more than one street, the address is obviously only on one street. If the homeowner decides that they really want to change that address, they have to come and apply to do that, right?
Yep.
And we have control over that. But they can't just build a driveway onto the adjacent street, which is not their address.
Correct.
Correct.
And if they build an ADU, an eight hundred square foot ADU that's four foot off that street, it's not their address. They still can't just put in a driveway, can they?
Yeah, I would, I would not make it available to eight hundred square, to the minimum four foot setback. I would only make it available as an alternative for the other types.
So, so you can say it not base it based on the square footage, but based on compliance with.
Right.
Our zoning.
Right.
Yeah, but in real, in reality, okay, so let's say there's a big party going on at the ADU and somebody gets hurt. And it's got an address of the other street, but the homeowner is the one who says, he calls the fire department. Says, we, you know, somebody's hurt. We need to have somebody out there. They're going to go to the, the main, sorry. They're going to go to the main house. That's what they have in their records.
Why would the person?
That'll happen regardless of if we do a driveway or not. This would give.
Oh, yeah, I, first off, you can't have a driveway on two different sides. You just can't. You know, we, and we've had people who've tried to do that. Some people have gotten special permission due to special cases, but for the most part. But the neighbors did complain, which is why it came to the council to start with.
I, I think people do it informally.
As long as nobody complains, then it's no big deal, Randy. But when people complain, then it is a big.
I just, right, I agree with you, but I'm just saying, I think most people that do it don't come to us and go, by the way, hey, I'm going to do this extra, you know? And I would hope that anybody that's smart enough to say somebody's got hurt at my house gives the address.
Not necessarily.
Totally. I mean, you know, but I, I.
Can I, for the parking front, if we are only allowing this driveway thing, if we do our bigger setback, wouldn't that create more of a driveway to park in for that ADU and limit the amount of street parking anyways?
Well, it depends. If that's the front of the ADU, then they want it just to be their front yard, but. See, this is, this is where the word ADU gets in the way of the nature of the home, right? Okay, so two blocks away from where I live on Encina, there are a lot of eleven hundred square foot, twelve hundred square foot homes. All right, that's, they don't call it an ADU. They call it their home, right? So if you're, if you're sitting on a five acre lot or a three acre lot and you have a twelve hundred square foot ADU, you know, move it eight blocks that way and it's a home. So if we're, and, and then that, that look is more consistent with the neighborhood. So rather than a backyard pool and people's, you know, will come to the backyard to go. So that's why I'm looking at in general, I'd rather have a lot split every time over, over an ADU. Just because it's more consistent with the nature of the, of the home look. The second is I'd rather have a twelve hundred square foot ADU that, that looks like a home. And, and one of the ways is if, if it fits on the street and it looks right and it seems like a good planning, we would still have control over the plan on that.
Yeah.
You know, because, because it still would have to come to us to make that a change in address and, and everything else of that plan. So we'd still, we wouldn't lose control, but we might get design responsibility or design effect that we wouldn't get any other way.
Yeah, it seems like it's another incentive to get people to observe our setbacks as if we allow more.
Right.
Driveway.
Okay, good feedback. Number forty, clarify the kitchen standards. I think we've been through that one. Number forty one, why no basement ADUs and JDUs? It should, we could reduce neighbor impact issues and assess safety could be addressed, access safety. Basements are exempt from floor. Did you have any other comments on this one?
And then the other question is, if we had a detached ADU and they wanted to have a basement, would we want them to have a kitchen in the basement?
No, no, no. Else they have to re-sprinkle the whole house and it's a fire hazard.
Well, here's the thing, on a, on a new, so we're, I brought up the question from the standpoint of impact on a neighbor. Right? So if there are a lot of people with my next door neighbor knocked down their acer and put a two-story place up with a forty-five hundred square foot basement. Okay, that's, that's three houses for some people. If, and with a separate entrance, if they, if they chose to make that an, you know, an attached ADU, the stairwell's already there, there had made the fire standards for that. And nobody would be impacted by the views of a basement ADU. So what, the reason I brought it up was the idea that that would be a lower impact than on, on top of a garage looking down on somebody or four feet away from the edge, and it would probably be less expensive for them. They just make, make the interior changes. So that, that was, and they're, they're all, I was saying earlier, they're all over New York. You know, there, many people go downstairs and live in those places. So and it, so that we can, we can regulate the fire aspect of it. We can regulate the exhaust fans aspect of it, everything else, and it lowers impact. And I mean, people, people are building these, you know, three times the Olympic sized dig to build their places. And that's a natural place for an ADU. But anyway, that's, what are you encouraging? I, what I'm saying is that we're, we're saying specifically that we're not allowing it and I'm saying.
Right now, it's not allowed.
Yeah, right. And what I'm saying is I'd rather have it allowed not underneath an ADU, but underneath an existing house.
Right. And they then regulate it and we then would require all those safety things.
Right, because it's.
A fire phone still exists.
It's just.
Yeah, if you have a kitchen down in the basement, in fact, if you have a basement, you must have the house sprinkled.
Right, and you, and you also.
It's a fire requirement, not our requirement.
And you also have to have exterior exits and all these other things. Windows have to be at the right height so that you can climb out of them. All this stuff.
So under, under state law, habitable basements are allowed under detached ADUs?
Yes.
And habitable basements are allowed under attached ADUs?
And habitable basements are allowed under.
Attached ADUs under state law.
All right, but under state law, at the eight hundred square foot level?
Yes.
But we can control everything above that.
Well, I think it's, 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 it's the definition of ADUs. It's within the general ADU definition.
So people could just have a basement now under an ADU?
So they would have to be habitable AD, or basements. They could not be like a.
Okay, but what does that exactly mean, a habitable basement?
So it would have to meet building code in terms of height, so seven, seven and a half feet, I think is the minimum. It doesn't have to have a kitchen in, in the basement now.
Right, so then local code could prohibit the kitchen.
But right now, the local code prohibits basements under detached ADUs.
No, it, it, it does allow it. The entrances, there's limitations in terms of where the entrances, like the stairway down to the basement can go. And that has to be outside the accessory structure, accessory building setback.
So that brings up an interesting question. First of all, if, so I don't know of any basements underneath an ADU right now. But if you had a, 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 a ADU with a basement that was separate ADU, that would not meet, that would not be basically something that we, that would be something we have a regulation over because it'd be two ADUs on a property.
No, it could be a four hundred square foot basement and a four hundred square foot top.
But it counts. It's not free. You can't get a free basement. It counts.
It counts as floor.
Or a detached ADU, yes, because basements would have to be considered floor, yeah.
Wow, wow. Another good reason to have a.
What I want to make sure we're not doing is that state law is allowing something under an eight hundred square foot ADU that we're not allowing under an ADU that's greater, and therefore that drives people who only build eight hundred square foot ADUs, which are more likely to be four feet off the fence. That I don't want to do.
Right.
So if state law is allowing something to happen to eight, eight hundred square foot ADUs, I want to be able to allow that for larger ADUs because I want to require them to comply with our zoning issue.
Good point.
We've talked a lot about trees, but how to, like, you could do a basement ADU, eight hundred square foot and just like wreck a bunch of trees if you wanted to, right?
Well, I'm assuming if it's a basement ADU, there's a structure above it that's already removed the tree.
If I wanted to build a new one, they were just saying like you could do four hundred above ground, four hundred underground.
Yes.
Put it four feet away from the fence and have it there. Yeah, bad law. It's a very bad law.
So I think this one requires a little more analysis as we bring it forward for the code, based on some of the concerns being raised.
So this, so, but the point that you made, I understand is the square footage in a basement under a detached ADU isn't isn't pre-square footage like it is under a main house. So, so therefore, if the maximum size of an ADU is twelve hundred square feet and you're going to put a basement under an ADU, the maximum size of the above ground ADU is going to be six hundred square feet. Assuming.
Assuming equal.
It's contiguous, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of a big deal, isn't it? That's a state law issue.
That's a big deal.
We'll, we'll work through that one a bit as we bring it back in the, in the code. Kitchen tenders, basements. Why wouldn't we be encouraging lot splits even more than ADUs? I think we do encourage SB nine lot splits. We try and make that process as streamlined as possible. We're still working through some kinks in that, but that's the overall objective.
Well, wait, but let me, let me say something to that because the, the adverse piece to that is you end up with a bunch of half acre lots. Versus acre lots with, and that, you know, with, with the detached ADU.
Well, I, I, what I specifically thinking about was trying to encourage a lot splits on three and five acre lots.
Well, that's different.
Yeah.
I, I, I think we're addressing the encouragement of two acre and larger lot splits by reducing some of the requirements.
Yes.
Like the frontage and the depth.
Right.
Like based on this Santiago issue that came up before.
Yeah, what I'm, what I've been looking at is, is make it as, as easy to split a two acre lot and above as it is to put an eight hundred square foot ADU in. Okay, cool.
With, with of course the caveat that if it's a one acre lot split, each of those half acre lots can also have.
Right. But that's why spending some time on the bigger lots.
Yeah. And then forty three, if we had to have multifamily, would we want it? That is a much bigger conversation, not for this evening.
I, I, that was, I put that in as something for us to talk about it at a different time, but I just said, watchful, by the way.
But let me just say one thing that relates to a previous conversation on that. If we had multifamily that was off El Camino and we required the ingress egress to be onto El Camino rather than onto one of the side streets such as Gresham or whatever, that's where this issue of being able to put in a driveway on, on a contiguous street to your lot becomes a really big issue.
Right, yeah, right, right.
That would be a separate thing that we would be required in that, in that area because we've already, we already discussed that. We already had discussed that. If we did something on El Camino, we would require it to go on to, you know, and get egress and egress.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirement, but that would, in any multifamily, we can design all kinds of requirements that we have in address.
Right, right. I'll put it this discussion.
It is not a mess. That's correct.
I didn't intend it for me. I just put it on the rear screen.
All right.
All right, that, that was all the submitted policy questions. Are there any additional policy questions that you think could help staff as we move this forward?
Well, we have to hear public comments.
Yeah.
Are there any public comments? I saw you over there writing. Okay. Any on mine? Okay. Then I think we have, first off, I'm very surprised we've done so fast.
Well, clearly we have one missing council member. She must have been the talkative.
I, I'm not going to tell her you said that. Okay, so anyway. We do have, we do have a little celebration.
We do.
Because we do have a council member who is, you know, turning thirty-five. And so we would like to, we would like to recognize that person's birthday. And the vice mayor has also enhanced our our celebration with some champagne. So we have cupcakes here and so we would like to have those things passed around.
Yeah.
It's Rick's.
Yes.
Then we'll have to sing to him, by the way. Something like that.
Mr. Mayor, you want to adjourn the meeting? We'll stop the audio recording.
When you adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, let's adjourn the meeting and then we will sing if that's okay with everybody. All right?
We definitely.
Any, any, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, good. All right. Happy birthday to you. Come on, guys.
Yeah, is he recording or not?